To order. And the roll call.
Karen Hardy?
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Join me for a moment of silence or private reflection or prayer. Amen. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
1.5 Business Services. Call for a budget hearing. Mr. Murray?
Thank you, madam vice president, members of the board. Per ARS 15-901, the governing board shall prepare a notice establishing a date and time at a time not later than July 15th and designating a public place within each school district, which a public hearing and board meeting shall be held. The proposed preliminary budget summary and notice of public hearing were posted on the Arizona Department of Education website on June 22, 2023. The district must adopt the 2023-24 budget and file the adopted budget with the superintendent of public instruction no later than July 18, 2023. In accordance with ARS 15-905A2, districts that maintain a website must provide a link on their website to ADE's website where the district's proposed budget summary can be viewed. Districts must also email the school finance budget team a clickable link to their webpage where the link to the proposed budget was placed. A copy of the email and a screenshot of the website will be retained in the file located in the district's business office. The full proposed and adopted budgets are posted on the Arizona Department of Education's website, the district's website, and are made available for public view in the district office upon request. So this is a public hearing. I will go ahead and, so I do have the presentation that I gave at the proposed budget back in June. So I will quickly go through these same slides since this was already presented once before. And should anyone have comment, then that is appropriate. So the purpose is stated on the slide of what I just read in the action item. The preliminary, or actually the adopted budget presentation, is the exact same as the proposed preliminary budget. The budget forms are shown in very small form there for the presentation purposes, but these are the forms that are filled out. And then, once these reports are then used to populate these forms, the budget is actually produced and the documents are then sent on to the state. Average daily membership is definitely an area in which, when we look at the reports provided from the state, the average daily membership is what drives our budget and develops the budget capacity. So you can see on this slide, there's some screenshots. This again is a series of screenshots for visual purposes so that you as a board and members of the community can see exactly how these budget forms are populated. You can see that taking the state reports up in the top-left corner is then transferred over into the budget forms that the auditor general provides. And then these numbers are then used to populate the district's annual budget. You can see on the next slide, the base support for the state is $4,914.71 per pupil. That amount is then used as a multiplier for all students and the average daily membership that the district does have each fiscal year. The calculations are shown here on one of the budget worksheet pages where the per pupil up at the very top in that rectangle at the top, that is our Group A, what they call weighted student counts for Group A students. Those are our regular students, all students that are in the classroom. And then below in the middle to lower section, that is our Group B students or the students who do receive special services as qualified through our special services or student services department. On the next slide, these numbers are then calculated against the base support that we saw a couple of slides ago, generating what is then eventually becomes the general budget limit. On the next slide, this is the district additional assistance page that I again reviewed in detail at the proposed budget. These are the figures that produce our district additional assistance numbers and which we use for capital purchases. You can see in the bottom-left corner, the historical DAA that we received from the state going back to fiscal year 18 and then to current, which is approximately 2.7 million from fiscal year 23. But in fiscal year 24, we are projected to receive just over $3 million in capital funding for fiscal year 24. The calculations tab for our override, this is the final year of the override, year seven, which will be reduced to one-third of what we normally would receive when we are fully funded for the first five years. So we are projected to receive about 1.7 million in override funding. Again, this the seventh and final year of the override. The calculations page, page seven on the budget form. You can see this is a shrunk version, edited version to where I can fit most of it on the slide here. You can see that in column A, Maintenance and Operations, we will have a budget of roughly just under $58 million in MNO. And then roughly $3 million, I mentioned in the previous slide, for district additional assistance in which we use for capital purchases. As again gone through in detail at our proposed budget, we did talk about the one-time state aid supplement where the state provided one-time funding to school districts based on their budgeted, or the surplus that they projected at the state level. Our portion of that will be about $1.4 million in one-time funding. So this is not an ongoing dollar amount. This is again one-time state aid supplement. Budgeted expenditures, this is page one of the budget worksheet. You can see here, this page simply just shows in the bottom-right corner that we are reaching our budget capacity of just under $58 million as we saw on previous slides so that we can show the state that we are budgeting to that max budget capacity. If we budget less than that, we will receive less than that. We can't budget more than that because then it becomes an audit exception and definitely not good accounting practices to budget more than what you're actually going to receive. On the next slide, this is page eight of the budget form. Again, we reviewed this in detail, the proposed budget. This is showing roughly the $3 million that we're going to receive this year in capital funding for a total of about $9 million. This number is an approximate as we are still closing our books for fiscal year 23. We're anticipating roughly about $9 million remaining in capital funds for the district going into fiscal year 24. Budgeted expenditures for capital, that's more of the detailed view there. You can see in the bottom-right corner, again, this is just like the MNO page. The bottom-right corner, we need to reconcile and make sure that that number is in line with what the state is projecting that we will receive. Again, if we budget less than that, we are just hurting ourselves. And if we budget more than that, we are definitely in a not-good place with budgeting more than what we're able to expend. On the next slide, this is for classroom site funds. This shows the approximate dollar amount that we'll receive from the state. The state will do a statewide correction as far as when they recalculate student population across the state. This will happen again probably in September. And then, once we receive the actual statewide student population and we receive what our portion of that would be, we're anticipating roughly $5.9 million in classroom site fund monies given to the district. This used to be called Prop 301. They now refer to it as classroom site funds. And then the remaining slide here, this is a, there's a couple other sides just after this, but this is just the summary page showing all the different funds that the district and other districts across the state manage, from general funds to title funds, federal state grants, local revenue sources. All of this is shown here on this particular slide. The next page is the cover page of the actual state report that goes, that is actually published on the website and given to the state along with all the other supporting forms. This is just showing that the adopted budget took place, is taking place on this date. You can see the date of June 20 there where the proposed budget occurred. And then it's showing you on the right-hand side, the proposed tax levies that will be assessed based on the dollar amounts that the state is allocating to the district. And the final slide, as always, financial transparency on our district website. All of these presentations, all of the budget forms are located on the district website under the Business Services Department, Financial Transparency and Financial Documents. This is where you can see the actual budget forms. You can see the presentations that are associated with it. And then also, you can contact my office at any time to answer any questions that you may have. Again, this is the budget hearing. And then later, the adopted budget will take place in an action item. It's open for comment. And again, this is the shorter version of it because we discussed this at length on June 20.
So there's been no changes since June 20?
No change.
What is the average daily membership of our district?
What is it?
Yes.
It changes every day. It's roughly, it's roughly 5,200 students, 5,300 students.
I wasn't here for the June meeting. On the one-time state aid supplement slide, it talks about how cost of living adjustments will no longer be provided. Is that new to this presentation?
That was given, that was given at the June 20 meeting as well. Correct. So we spoke in directors, the rationale behind that is because of the, and we talked about this at the compensation board meeting that we had way back in, I think it was February, March-ish. We talked about in order to sustain the added funding, the compensation, the increased compensation for district employees, that we would have to safeguard every available, all the available funds that came from the state level, including any additional funds so that we can sustain salary increases longer term.
So the $1.4 million that we're going to get from the state surplus money is going to go kind of into that fund to keep that step program?
That's correct.
Sustainable?
It will be included in the MNO. Yeah, it'll be included in the general fund.
Okay. I know this isn't something that we're voting on. This is a discussion item. I am a little bit uncomfortable with the COLA no longer being provided with that language being included because we recently revised the contracts, our teacher contracts, to make it so that we could provide mid-year pay increases without jeopardizing the integrity of those contracts. And so I'm just, I guess I'm wondering why we made those changes if we didn't intend to have any mid-year pay increases.
That's something that, based on these dollars, when it comes to the supplemental that came to us from the state, that's what we're referring to in this particular presentation. The 1.4 million that's coming to us, as we communicated before, in order to maximize the longevity and the ability to continue to sustain the raises that we're giving in fiscal year 24, we spoke about not including a COLA for fiscal year 24.
But there are times when the state may provide us funding and it must go to those kinds of things. So our contract needs to reflect that. This wasn't tied specifically to that. There were bills that were related to that. They didn't go through this time, but they may at some other time. Our contracts need to allow for that. So if that comes down and the state says, here's an extra $1 million, but it must go to teacher salary, we need language in our contract to allow us to do that.
Okay. But we wouldn't just, we wouldn't be calling it a COLA. We'd be saying it.
Right.
You know, it's this other money that came in.
Okay.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Are there any comments? Now close the hearing. So is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I would move that we approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 All right. 3.1 Business Services. Discussion and possible action on the LHUSD number one Facility Use Manual for 2023-2024.
Thank you, madam vice president, members of the board. Information pertaining to the scheduling of district facilities, appropriate use of district facilities, use fees, et cetera, are contained within the District Facility Use Manual. The governing board annually approves the Facility Use Manual, including fees. The governing board may grant uncompensated use of facilities to individuals and groups who support the educational function of the district, not including required personnel or utility charges. Should the governing board grant uncompensated use, a list of individuals and groups and any approved dollar amounts and/or stated conditions will be referenced in the meeting minutes of the governing board meeting in which uncompensated use was approved. The District's Facility Use Manual for 2023-24 is attached to this action item. And I can, if you would like, give a little bit of context as to all of the work that has happened over the last, probably two years, 18 months, which is, it's work that had to be done in order to get to this point so that we can ensure that transparency, again, that's the important word, that things are transparent and people are all on the same page and all are given opportunity to come to this point and to be before the board and district. So just a few notes here. The Business Department provided a historical review of community groups who received uncompensated use of district facilities. The following community groups provided scholarships for district students and/or provided contributions to update district facilities. The Lake Havasu Community Concert Association, Lake Havasu Community Choir, Lake Havasu Regional Orchestra, Lake Havasu Symphonic Winds, Lake Havasu Ballet. Groups that support the educational function of the district through clubs or sports activities for our students include Pace, Special Olympics, Fever Volleyball, Fearless Wrestling, Havasu Heat Wave Wrestling. During fiscal year 2023, the identified groups received an average of approximately $3,000 in uncompensated facility use, not including charges for utilities, custodial, or other professional services provided by district personnel. Our schools have priority in scheduling facilities to accommodate school activities and functions. Remaining dates during the school year are made available for individuals and groups to request use of facilities, pending availability of district staff to oversee access to the facilities. The governing board will review the Facility Use Manual annually and take action in a public meeting to include uncompensated use no later than the first regular session, the regular session governing board meeting in June to determine if uncompensated use will be granted. That's a little bit of a historical look at getting this information over a year and a half and then giving you the detail of what occurred this past fiscal year, the fiscal year that just closed.
I do have a motion to make, and I apologize because it's kind of a lengthy motion. But I make a motion to grant up to $3,500 in uncompensated facility use of district facilities, excluding fees for utilities, custodian, and other professional services that are provided by the district for Lake Havasu Community Concert Association, Lake Havasu Community Choir, Lake Havasu Regional Orchestra, Lake Havasu Symphonic Winds, Lake Havasu Ballet, Pace, which stands for Patriotic Americans for Constitutional Education, and Special Olympics. In addition, uncompensated facility use will be granted for those feeder sports groups that Mr. Murray mentioned that exclusively serve LHUSD students to include Fever Volleyball, Fearless Wrestling, Havasu Heat Wave Wrestling. And that's it.
So is there anyone here that would like to talk? Because one at a time?
I don't.
We come up here.
Just come one at a time.
I'm with the Lake Havasu Concert Association. My name's Bob Kettner. I'm president. When you said 3,500, is that per group or total?
I'm proposing that it would be per group, and that is negotiable. We haven't had a chance to discuss that amount as a board. So yes, it would be per group. I'm under the impression that that would cover the usage fees for most of those groups based on their annual, their current annual usage for an entire year.
Okay. That's probably will cover it, but I understand that we were also getting compensation for the $80,000 that we paid already to the PAC to upgrade different things. So I wanted to make sure that, you know, even though it's 3,500, if we go a little bit over it, we still have quite a bit of money that we were going to be reimbursed for as far as that compensation. So I just wanted to make sure that's there.
So Mike, could you give us a little bit more context about the 3,500 and what that means as far as average and group?
And also to clarify, are we starting with a clean slate or are we taking into account past gifts from these community groups?
That was, that was my understanding in our discussions that we had, that this would be a clean slate. So all of the facility use that has been happening free of charge, uncompensated, for many, many, many years. We took into account those donations that were given. We had individuals supply us with those donations that were given. And we matched that against what the facility use rental fee would have been. And as we compared that over the many years that uncompensated use has been given, it came really close to the dollar amount that you just gave me of approximately $80,000. So that's why the, well, the information before you would be that we start anew with giving these credits based on how the board sees fit to do that.
And I'm guessing this is one of those things that we would evaluate each year. And I would think that if we're having good community partners who are doing, you know, the same things that we would keep this type of agreement going, although we need to address it every year to be transparent.
That's correct. It is required on an annual basis. That's correct. So in June of each year, we would do this again. And that data, again, in a spreadsheet that we reviewed several times, looking at fiscal year 23 and all of the usage that occurred in fiscal year 23, we looked at it all by date, by hours, by location. So many of you had, well, some of you had performing arts center, but also utilized classrooms. So we looked at all of that. And we plugged in the hourly rate associated with how many hours that you use the facility. And we came up with roughly $3,000 that we saw on average that each of you had in uncompensated use.
And we do want to recognize that some of these clubs and organizations provide services to our students that we wish as a school district we could provide and simply cannot at this point. So that would be musical education, the types of cultural enrichment through dance, Special Olympics opportunities, and the constitutional information that our Pace Club is able to provide for our students. So we appreciate that. And I'm kind of basing the $3,500 on the $3,000 figure. But we want to be generous with our groups because they are so generous with us. And we thought that that would be, or I thought that $3,500 would be a fair amount, but we could bump that up if the other board members would like to do that.
In this process, we're simply aligning with state statute. Where in statute, it specifically says educational function of the district, and that's directly tied with the board granting uncompensated use. So all we're doing is trying to make sure everybody, all of us, are in line with statute and having this discussion in a public meeting, referring to the meeting notes. As we had conversations in the past about past meeting notes, this is, we're having this discussion on July 10 with meeting notes being taken in a public meeting.
I understand. The only thing is that this is our 50th anniversary and we're all having six shows this year, which we normally have five. So I'm just saying, we may go into a little bit more this season, which is unusual. Yeah. But I'm just keeping that in mind that before I came here, there was no charge because of the $80,000. So.
Yeah, I think that's something that the board can consider.
I remember that we passed item number three with what Mr. Murray said was the right way to do it.
Just so you're aware, even in looking at your use this year, if you added a show, you're not going to go over the $3,500 at all.
So have you been in contact with these groups?
Different groups that have reached out. We have shared, I can share with any group that wants to meet with me afterwards or meet with me later what your current usage was and what this would cover.
Okay, my concern is for like next fiscal year, what are you needing to consider? Do you need us to give more money again in order to get this to keep going? That's what I'm kind of looking at, is future.
So this is a proposal to the board today.
Correct.
And as they were saying, this would come to them every year, but they see this as a perpetual thing to approve. I can't speak for them.
Correct.
But they can share that in general.
That was what my motion covered.
Okay.
Well, I made the motion, and so are you seconding my motion?
I'm seconding Mr. Murray's.
Mr. Murray can't make a motion. I made a motion. Are you seconding my motion?
I put Mr. Murray in with my description of my motion.
I, okay, so I made a motion, so my motion stays on the floor until it's either seconded or dies for lack of second?
So what was your motion, John?
I move that we go ahead and we do this the way Mr. Murray presented it.
So Mr. Murray didn't give a specific amount, so.
Yeah. So she basically did a motion on what Mr. Murray said. She just put the amount in. So I think that's really the discussion right now is, is 3,500 a good amount? How would going over 3,500 affect us?
Yeah.
So that's maybe the question with some, you know, kind of figuring it out here today with the groups present. And is there a mechanism that we could do for extenuating circumstances if something happened and a group needed to go over a little bit?
That was the purpose of my motion.
So the mechanism would be they would have to come back to the board to approve that?
But it could be done.
Anything can be done.
It also, we also could look at the fact as what was just discussed or what was mentioned, that if this is the 50th anniversary, your recommendation this year doesn't have to be exactly the same as next year. So there's flexibility there. All that we need to do for the sake of administrators and board and community groups is just be on the same page and make sure that that's transparent, whether it's $1,000 or $3,000 or whatever it may be. It's, we just need to make sure that it's in writing so that everybody is treated and knows exactly what to budget for going into next year. That's all that needs to happen.
Let me clarify my motion. I agree with you that that's got to be understood, but it could be anything at this point. I agree with you that, that's got to be understood, but it could be anything at this point because what's understood is something we need to negotiate.
John, I'm sorry to bring this up again, but procedurally, there can only be one motion on the floor at any one time. I, I did make a motion.
Which died for lack of a second.
We did not ask for a second. So we could ask at this time for a second. And by the way, my motion basically says we're saying the same thing.
You are.
Yes.
I'm just clarifying, we just want to all be on the same page. That's, that's all. And that's exactly what you just said.
Do we have some more comments?
Yeah, that's what I was saying. I want, I want to hear some more community comments before we adjust the motion or second it.
My name is Linda Fusselman, and I'm the president of the Lake Havasu Symphonic Winds. First of all, I would like to thank you for the time and effort that's put into this, and we truly appreciate it. And because there are notes being taken and for complete transparency, because I know that there's been a lot of talk about the rental of the practice room and the janitorial fees and the utility fees, so I just want it all to be transparent and on paper so that we all understand. And so I know that you guys have talked about that, but if we could just state what that outcome has come to, is that 3,500 is, does that include the janitorial, the?
No, 3,500 or whatever the dollar amount comes to be is strictly on the facility itself.
Okay.
So custodial or professional services, if you need to use the PAC and you need someone to run the sound and the lighting, then that hourly rate would still apply, just as it did this year and in years past. That, that doesn't change. The credit, the credit is simply on the actual facility that you would meet in, whether it be a classroom or the PAC or wherever.
Okay, and so the classroom, we have not been being charged at all for, and we haven't paid for the janitorial fee or the utility use. And that is in, that is being proposed. And so it would end up that we would end up being charged approximately $100 for every practice.
So only, only rental fees are being discussed when it comes to custodial or professional services, as I mentioned. If you're using a classroom during a school, a normal school day, during the summertime, it's a different story, or during fall break or spring break, if you happen to use a facility when school was not in session that day, then your utility rate and custodial rate would apply because we don't have staff there at that particular, we'd have basically opened the school for the group to come in without kids being, being present earlier that day. So when we have kids present earlier that day, we have staff typically who are cleaning up after the kids later on that evening. So when, in your case, when you're using a classroom to meet and practice or whatever it is that, that you need to do within that classroom, then the facility rate would apply, and that was factored into these rates here, I believe, for, for most of you, that we looked at every, every part of the campus that you were accessing, we included it in the spreadsheet. So that's included in this estimate of $3,000 that you would have, have spent during the fiscal year '23. But if you're using the classroom during a regular school day, we will not charge you for utilities or custodial as long as, and we'll give you a couple of, of times to correct it, as long as my custo, our custodians don't go in there and say, this, this room is just a mess. They left and, and we have to spend an hour in here trying to clean this stuff up, we'll, we'll, we'll place a phone call to you and say, look, this is what was, was discussed and documented, please try to correct that. If it happens again, then we'll probably impose the custodial fee on, on you because you're not cleaning up after yourself. And I think that's pretty fair. We'll give you an opportunity to correct it, we'll have a conversation about it, and you, we, we can work it out. It's not, I, I have, I have no question that this is, this is definitely a, will be an easy process moving forward. This just has to take place, like I mentioned, and it is. So thank you for being here. Thank you, Board, for considering the action.
Yes, and thank you, and I pretty much knew all that. I just wanted it to be recorded. Thank you.
We've, we've got an easy process, and anything can be accomplished, so we should, we should be able to get everything done with some comments here. My name's Nathan Cottam. I'm the artistic and executive director of Lake Havasu Ballet, and I also want to thank you for just what certainly is a momentous amount of work that's gone into making sense of all of the things that are involved here. I'm pretty new to Lake Havasu Ballet. I came in about a year ago, and I've been having a wonderful time here in Lake Havasu this past year. And we were pleased and honored to work with Sam over at the, at the Performing Arts Center on two occasions last year. I'm approaching the, the stand just to comment because we, our use, really what we do, it puts us really over the $3,500 limit. So if, for us to continue the types of activities that, that we want to do, which is presenting ballet performances, it requires a little bit more time in the Performing Arts Center in order for, you know, because mostly we work with kids, and, and they are mostly from the, from the Lake Havasu Unified Schools. Getting them in there, they're great. I love working with them, but it is a little bit of cat herding and so forth in order to put on shows. This past year, we put on The Nutcracker in December, and we put on Swan Lake in, in May. So my, kind of a, a little comment on, you know, if, if we would have had to pay the extra amount, even above the 3,500, it would have made a real difference in our fiscal health this past year, right? And, and I know we're not talking, you know, earth-shattering sums of money, but we are still recovering from COVID. Our enrollment is still quite low. And so my request is, is, is there some way that we could have a workaround for an organization like mine that, that is, that has to use more than $3,500 per, well, actually, we don't have to, but we'd be, we'd be severely curtailed in what we were able to do. So whether, whether you might consider a, a percentage perhaps, you know, I don't know if some kind of, or if, or if we could somehow make use of some of the dollars that other people don't use or something like that, an extra four, eight, you know, $4,000 or $8,000 currently is going to make a big difference to my organization. So if there's some way to allow, allow an organization like mine that exceeds that $3,500 limit on a regular basis to receive some exceptional benefit or something like that, it would make a big difference to our operation and our ability to continue to bring the, the program in which really almost exclusively benefits children from Lake Havasu School District. So that's, that's my request, if there's some way to, to amend your proposal in that manner, that would make a big difference to us. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Steve Seiki. I'm with the Lake Havasu Regional Orchestra. I, I, I know you've gone through this, and it's still not quite clear in my mind, so I just had to get it straight so I can tell my board members. What I'm understanding is, and the PAC stuff is fine, I'm, I'm good with that. It's the rehearsals. If we're there on a regular school day, scheduled school day, like in, in the band room, is what we use, we take our own chairs out, stands out, and we put our own stands and chairs and put them away after each rehearsal. If it's on regular school day, the utility fees and custodial fees are waived only if it's an exception to that. Is that correct?
That's correct, and I, I just want to clarify, so on the attachment here, so actually, it's posted right there. So I, I want to propose amending this. This is the fee right here, the fee schedule, page 14, and I know it has to be embedded somewhere else in here because I've seen it before, but I'd like to put right here, so it's on this one document, last page where all the rates are, I'd like to propose changing the wording to say utility rates and custodian fees, with the exception of field and track lights do not apply when use of facility occurs on a day when school was in session up to 10:00 PM. So that way, it's clear right there, clear as can be. We're, we're also pointing out the custodian fees. It's not, not the auditorium director's fees, but it's, it's, if you're using a classroom, you're going to clean up after yourself, you're out of there by 10:00 PM, so it allows our custodian to do a quick walkthrough before school starts the next day. As long as there's no issues, I think that's completely fair.
Oh, no, I, I agree with you. I just want a clarification, so I know exactly what it is. And again, I like to think.
Next time that'll, so next time you see this, that will, as long as the board approves that, that will change that little asterisk at the bottom to include custodian fees.
All right, thank you for clarification. And again, I like to thank all of you. I know we spent a lot of time, I spent a lot of time with some of you, and I really appreciate all the consideration you folks have done on this.
And just before our next speaker comes up, I would, I would approve that language too. I think it solves a lot of problems because then we're just saying, well, you only incur these extra fees if basically someone has to do extra work.
My name is George Krupel, and I'm the president of the Lake Havasu Community Choir, and I want to thank you for this opportunity. Not quite a year, but pretty close a year ago, this issue raised its ugly head in August of last year, and I wrote a letter which was fairly negative because of the issues that were going around, mostly rumor. After your meeting, and I saw the YouTube, I was out of town, you swayed me over, okay? So I wrote another letter to our, our, our group in support, because I know you were trying to fix what was broken. I appreciate that, okay? It's not totally fixed yet. Now, I did have some answers made tonight, and also a correction made, because when I asked for the choir room to be used, and I got hit with a custodial fee of an extra $70 a night, of course, I screwed into the ceiling. Custodians never come in after us, ever, and that got corrected. It got waived, and I appreciate it. So, so I don't have to argue for that fact anymore. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay?
It'll be shown there on page 14.
I'm just saying, it's, it's going to, so I don't have to keep writing grant letters and saying, oh, you know, they're not using it. Okay, that's the other thing. Another issue I have with is that we also use the PAC for our, our concerts, which is twice a year, or twice in a fiscal year. We also use it for what we call a tech rehearsal, and we use Sam, and we do it for like about three hours. It's totally for lights, sound, this kind of thing. The PAC is not used, the stage is used, yet we still have to pay for the whole PAC, and we're getting charged for utilities for the entire PAC. I would like to see if there's a way you could customize some things towards the groups and what they actually use and how they're using it, because the paintbrush that's broadly stroked across the whole thing is hurting us in a lot of ways, okay? If all I'm using is a stage, and I'm not using any bathrooms, I'm not using anything off of that stage, I would like to see a little compensation. I'm sure some of the other groups that use it for their rehearsals, you know, we're not wearing, tearing anything, no, the rest of the place isn't being touched, the lights aren't even coming on, it's the stage. We're using the stage and the sound system to get prepared for the concert the next day. I would like to see if there's a way we could customize some of these things for the performances that we put on and the uses that we have for that. The other question I had is I know that the state tells you all what to do in a lot of ways when it comes to charges and fees and everything else. Do they have a minimum and maximum that they tell you you can do? They leave it up to you? They leave it up to the community? Or do they base it on Scottsdale, Arizona, what they would charge? Okay, because we're sure as hell not Scottsdale, Arizona.
No, but I believe it has to be based on fair market.
Correct.
Value.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, they don't, they don't tell us the specific dollar amount. We, we will, and this is part of the process for over a year now, where we, I was looking at different districts, neighboring districts, districts down in the valley, because there really aren't too many districts up in this area that have a performing arts center like we do. They may call the, they may say they have a little bit of a, of a theater, but it's not necessarily to the degree in which we have one. So I look at comparable sized theaters and then base our, our numbers off of that. I can tell you the, the dollar amounts here, the hourly rates of $100 an hour, if you're a class two for a performing arts center that size is, is pretty generous, and from what I've seen in, in other districts, what they're charging.
Okay. And the utility fees, where are they coming from? Because that's something that was new to me when I saw that.
Same thing. So Mesa Unified School District was one that I, that I looked at, as, there were others as well, but Mesa's doing the exact same thing, where they charge a utility fee so that that way they can break it off separate, so that what we just proposed here, again, the board still has to act on it. When you are using a classroom or other facilities within our buildings, we can overlook a utility fee or a custodian fee, just like the wording will say here on page 14, so that we're not embedding that fee within the hourly rate. In the past, it was included in the hourly rate, which made it difficult. So now, kind of what you're saying, with this model of having facility rental, personnel and utilities broken out in three separate sections, we can do more of an à la carte to where I'm going to charge you for this, this particular area of using the building or the room, but because kids were there earlier today and I still have custodians in the building, I'm not going to charge you the utility rate. Before, all of that was bundled together in your hourly rate. So that's why the hourly rate came down of the, for the facility, but we spread it out into other areas that we could then waive because we already have personnel in the building. So when you are using the music room, you know, use the music room, and we already, we have to have the air running anyways because we're not going to shut it down for a few hours to turn it back on when the kids come back in the building the next day. And plus, we still have personnel working till 11 o'clock at night cleaning the facility. So I believe this model does exactly what you're asking as far as the PAC goes, though, and just using the stage versus, you know, the seating area.
The entire facility, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not to say we can't do that, but it's, we're, we're going to have to figure out how we do that and what the, what the rate looks like to break out just the use of the stage, but not, not the other, you know, square footage that's sitting there too.
No, I understand. And, and, and I come from this from a business aspect. I was a businessman before I retired and was stupid and said I'd do this. Anyways, I know there's, there's ways of breaking it down, but, you know, I have to look at it from the dollar, from our standpoint. I can tell you this, our last concert we had, and we had 800 tickets sold, we had two concerts, and we did 800, which is not a bad size, okay? I was about 200 short of where I wanted to be, but 800 was fine. We walked away with $300 after all the expenses and stuff, advertising, everything else has really gone up, ticket prices, everything else, and that was under the old system. So now I'm looking at here, if I had to do that same concert under the fees I got now, I'm in a hole of almost two grand, okay? So we need to know where we're going to be, and that's why I'm saying, if I can cut here, this fee, that fee, whatever it is to try to get that back, because it costs us over $1,000 just to breathe a year with insurance, fees, all these other kind of things, okay? I need to make at least 500 bucks in two concerts, or I don't breathe. So that's where we're at. I know you have your own issues, and, and I'm not belittling that, but we're small, okay? We're a community. I feel sorry for the ballet guy. I don't have any money to give you, okay? I don't think any of us have any money to give you, so my sympathy's there, but my wallet's never going to be there, okay? So that's why we come and we bring these things to you, okay? We don't have a bottomless pit, okay? There's no money tree, there's no well, okay? And as you did bring it up, and we still are, we went in a hole with COVID because we didn't do anything for over two years. So I, I just hope that we can customize some. So I, I just hope that we can customize some stuff. Talk more with us. The computer system, I understand why you do it, but it's very impersonal, and it's hard to, hard to get across what we need to you without going directly to you, and anyways, that's where I'm at.
So we want you to come directly to us. The computer system is the, the tool to pass information back and forth, but that never substitutes a human being. So if you have questions, and I know I've had conversations with a few of you, and, and I know my staff has, I think that we're, we, we try to be very approachable. We try to listen, we try to hear. I mean, I think this is evident of that today. We're just trying to figure it out. This will be year one of possibly giving a credit to organizations, to groups, and we're going to, it's, it's just another way of basically saying you have uncompensated use via a credit, and it's being, it's, it's transparent, it's in writing. So I, I can say to your point, though, I'm looking at here, we don't charge for dressing rooms or include that in your, in your PAC, but, but dressing rooms, if you need them, it's an additional charge. So we do, we do break things out, and we do try to consolidate as much as we can. So bundling dressing rooms in with the PAC rental fee, not everyone needs dressing rooms. So that's how we also kind of get around it as well. If you need dressing rooms, it's an added cost, but we know not everyone needs it. So that kind of addresses, I just need the stage, you know, your concern about that.
Well, like you said, it's primarily on, on the Saturday, we do our tech. We're in there for sound, lighting, you know, just logistics, and then we're out of there, you know? So nothing in front of the stage is used. We come in from the back, and we exit through the back, you know? And so I just didn't know if there was a chance of getting a little bit of a break there since, you know, only about maybe a third of the whole PAC is being used, you know, so.
So for that, the one time that you do that, you said, I would just, I would just hope that the board takes that in and considers that with whatever your discussion would be-
If there's a way to break it out, and, you know, it would help us a lot, you know? We're, like I said, the maximum we're there is three hours, I think, is what we usually get in the SAM. And, and we're on stage, and that's it, you know? No one's out running around in the corridors, they're not using bathrooms, they're not, you know? We're just there to get ourselves set up, boom, and we're out of there.
It'd be, it would be difficult to break it out, but I believe, though, that the board in their discussions can take that into consideration when they're talking about the overall credit.
Okay.
And then that way, you don't have to worry about it, because it's-
Whatever we can get-
It's already there within the credit.
We're, we're grateful, okay? And I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
I just have, I just have one little question to Ms. Roman's motion. Does that mean that each group will start out with a, like a credit of $3,500 for the beginning of like September when we start rehearsals and things again? Is that what your motion is?
That's what I was proposing, yes.
Okay. And so there's a motion on the floor, and nobody has seconded, so we can't really do anything about it until your motion has been accepted or denied.
Right.
Okay.
So if I can clarify, it'll be July 1st to June 30th. So the credit would start retroactive to July 1st.
But it'll be our school year, per se, when we use the theater.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And I think the other discussion that needs to happen is if the board wants that amount, if they want a different amount, that they need to have that discussion.
We're just starting with the credit to begin with, and then we work off of that.
Correct.
Yes.
And, and just to make it clear, it would be renewable every year.
On, on your action, correct.
Yeah, on our action. It would come here, and we would renew that every year, and so you would have that amount of credit every year.
Oh, that's what, my question was, is that for the entire year?
That's, that's my, that's my proposal, at least, that, that's what we would approve for this upcoming fiscal year. But what Mr. Murray is saying is that this item has to come up for us annually, so we could adjust, let's say next year we say, well, let's say $3,500 gets approved tonight, but next year we say that wasn't enough, we could bump it up to $4,000, or we could change some of the other terms at our discretion, but, but yes, every year it would have to be renewed.
Okay. So I just want to clarify it myself, because it's still not in here. You take every season or every, for the entire year, well, we do it twice a year. So you take what would have cost us to rent the PAC, and not the, not the schoolroom, not the classroom, because that's different, but the PAC, say it costs $800. Well, we deduct that from the $3,500, and so then the remainder goes to the next season.
Cool.
To the next-
It won't, it will not roll-
Right, to the next year.
No, it won't roll to the next fiscal year.
No, no. Spring-
Yes.
Our spring, to the next concert. We'd still have that much money in. Basically, you're letting us have it like we've been paying for it for years, right? Yeah, which is wonderful for us. But for the ballet, if we each are given $3,500, $3,500, $3,500, I think what he's asking is, if we don't use the entire $3,500, can the remainder go to the ballet? You know what I'm saying? Five groups at $3,500, $3,500, $3,500, and then just max each one to 35, and what's left over? Go to the ballet?
Want to be on my board of directors?
No.
That's why my proposal, my motion is about letting Mr. Murray figure it out on his own.
And so I personally, I mean, this is still up for discussion, of course, amongst our board members. I would not have a problem with groups working together as Mr. Cottam, and I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name, who just spoke.
Hold on, tell me your question.
Thank you. So as that proposed, if there's some collaboration between groups, I wouldn't have a problem with that as a board member. I also wouldn't have a problem if groups combined performances, if there was live music to go along with ballet performance. I would not have a problem with that. I don't know what the other board members feel about pooling their resources.
My, my big issue is just, I, I feel like I need some more information before I would set on a dollar figure, exactly, on a dollar figure for this. I know we had discussions about where the groups were, and I don't know, you know, if we're comfortable sharing that in this situation or not, at this meeting, about which ones were over and which ones were under. But I, I really feel like I need some more information before I would hit a dollar figure.
I agree with you.
And I did have a chance in a meeting to talk about some of the specific numbers that the groups used. It does sound like all of the groups with about $3,500 would be covered for an entire, entire year's worth of performances based on their past usage, with the exception of the ballet. And then there was also some discussion about nonprofit status and how that would affect their fee schedule.
So if you are a 501(c)(3), and we have that information on file, it actually cuts your facility use fee in half based on the, the fee schedule? So that also supports everyone as well.
So a $3,500 credit would become basically $7,000 in terms of actual usage? Am I understanding correctly?
We wouldn't give them a $7,000 credit.
No, no, but, but in terms of like the hours, sorry, I wasn't proposing that.
I'm going to go the math the other way. They would only use 1,750 instead of using the $3,500.
So here's an example, if you used $15,300 and you gave us that information, your fee then becomes 7,915. So it's roughly in half. Most of you, we do have it on file, and we appreciate that. So if you don't have it on file, please get that to us right away. And, and you are correct. When you look at the numbers, the litera, I mean, we just need to be honest, we've met with the ballet, we've had this discussion, everyone meets that $3,500 threshold, with the exception of the ballet. And it's really working with them to figure out what is it that we can do. If you go with a $3,500 fee, then it's about $4,400 that they're short, based on having two performances and the practices that go with those. How the board wants to work that out is totally your option.
So in thinking about their partnership, if they wanted to partner, given this year, how much of the groups, if they decided to do it, how much of the group's monies who are under, how much of that money is available if they partnered to spread it around?
In quick math, so don't hold me to the exact number. It's, it's approximately about $2,000.
Yeah, the dollar amount that you're proposing is pretty close to what they're using by way of annual facility use charges.
And we're talking, and I'm doing math here.
You are the mathematician.
Well, here's the idea, if we're, if we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven groups, and right now we're $2,000 short, if we make this $4,000 and they work together, it covers it, but it would be incumbent on them to work together to do it.
I would be fine with amending my motion, especially since it has not received a second. And in fact, maybe for clarity's sake, I would just withdraw my motion, and if you would like to withdraw your motion as well, and then we can kind of start from scratch, would that be okay?
Okay, then I will withdraw my motion.
I will withdraw mine as well.
So before I make a motion, let me kind of see where the- So if we get it to 4,000 and the groups work together, and they all have their 501(c)(3), then they could, in a sense, cover that gap.
And sorry, I missed it. Did you say increasing the amount to 4,000? Okay.
And writing language in it so that they can share their funds, and probably having some type of mechanism for doing that, you know, some type of paperwork for doing that. I hate, I'm giving you more paperwork, Mike. And I'm just trying to think, is that what we're talking about?
That's what I think we're talking about.
I do think that's what you're saying, and I think then it becomes a conversation with community groups, and maybe we just need to meet with each group and say, this is what you used last year, do you envision any additional use this year? If you do, we could like put that in here now, so we know, and then we would know what was going to be left over, that you would then share with us that you are willing to put that on the ballet's account, so to speak.
I do want to check in with our business director, though. Does this sound like a workable solution, or is this too cumbersome with paperwork?
Anything's workable.
We're really not trying to make your life harder than it already is.
I think, I think we're overly complicating it personally, but again, we're, the objective is to just make this transparent, support community groups, support the public in general. I think the, the issue becomes, and again, I've been doing this for a little while, and I'm just concerned that someone overcommits in another area, and then another group wants to utilize something comes up, and they want to utilize, they have a special performance that comes up, they really want to use, utilize the PAC, bring in a special performer, and then now we have transferred monies over to another group, and now we're going to try to transfer that back. Now, they've already committed it for something else, because they're bringing in somebody special. I, I can tell you right now, I mean, I'm an optimist, but that will most likely happen at some point, and we're going to have a bunch of people who are upset at another group and organization because now they put themselves out or another group out. I'm, I'm just, I'm cautious with that, especially when we're just trying to make this to where we're legally compliant, so that people can use our facilities and that everyone is on the same page.
So your other option is this, you have all the groups before you. If they are perfectly fine with the $3,500 or the 4,000, and you want to condens, you want to allow the ballet to use the $7,900 worth of uncompensated use, you can do that as well. Everyone's here.
Yes, but I think, I feel like the idea is to make this like across the board fair for everyone and not do special carve-outs for any one group. I, I just, as much as I love the ballet, and I, I do, I go to all your performances, but I, I would feel uncomfortable singling out one group and doing a different amount for them.
Can I ask a question? Why does it cost so, me so much more?
Sure, it's easy to answer.
Can you come up to the show, please? So we can record it.
And, and repeat, repeat your question.
Sure, she's asking me, why, why, why does it cost us more than it costs you, basically? And I think it's the amount of time that it takes us to mount our performances, frankly, right? So we've got, this past year, when we did the Nutcracker, we had about 75, 75, 80 performers, okay? And they were coming, a lot of them were between the ages of three years old, and, and a lot of them were between three and 12, right? About 30 or 40 of them. And then, you know, another, another 30 were, you know, kind of high school age. And for us to get in there, what we did was, we went in, for, for both shows, we used the same schedule. We went in on Friday as soon as we could arrive, so we, we started in at, on Friday afternoon at 4:00 in the PAC. And because we have a cast of 70, 75, 80 people, we do, we do use the, the small theater just for a holding area, the band room for a holding area, and we, we need the dressing rooms as well, because we have, we have costumes, you know, we have to be changing costumes, we have to be, we have to basically have come in. So on Friday night, we come in, we bring in all of our costumes, we bring in what sets we have, they were minimal this year, but they'll hopefully grow in the future. And we work from 4:00 PM until 10, 10:00 PM on Friday, just to get our dress rehearsal done, all right? We came in then on Saturday morning, and the, the stage is the only place we can really kind of work all this stuff, you know? I mean, we prepare in the studio, but it, it's a completely, I mean, it's a completely different thing for the kids especially, they're not, they're not out there that often, you know? And we don't, you know, I want to, give me your schedule for the choir and the symphony and everything, but, and, and I'll, and I'll come, but I got to get these kids on stage, and they got to move all over the place and exit the stage and come back on the stage and change costumes and come back. So that's our Friday from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Saturday usually has to start at about 8:00 AM. We have to get some tech people in there at 8:00 AM, and we're there from 8:00 AM until 9:00 PM on Saturday. Yes, because we have, we have to get tech people in there to help, to continue to work on sets, to get everything ready for the show. Our dancers start showing up at about noon on Saturday for some final rehearsals and classes, and then our performance on Saturday was at 7:00 PM, 7:00 until 9:00, we're out of there by 10:00. And then we also had a performance on Sunday, and that Sunday performance, it was at 2:00, and we have to get in by about, you know, 10, 10, 11 o'clock, and then we're out by 5:00. So, and that's pretty efficient, too, you know, as ballet, as ballet studios go, to get in there with, with only a single day. It would be great if we could have another day, you know, the Thursday for a tech rehearsal that you were talking about, sir. But this is, as efficient as we could have done it, is with that schedule right there. And that's because I'm working with, you know, they're, they're students, I'm not working with professional dancers, and we get in there and, and get it done. I've, I've been really pleased with the schedule we've been able to maintain, but I hope that answers your question as to why it's more expensive for us to do it, and that's for two shows that we do.
I am Ross Johnson, I'm a board member of the ballet also, and we were just talking about, you know, if we do the $3,500 for each group, and maybe for ease of financial calculation of this, if we, you know, it starts from July 1st and goes to June 30th. So if we, each group had the $3,500 for their, their credit, maybe in the middle of June, at the end of that year, we could see that, well, these three groups are $700 under their $3,500, so there's $2,100 that's available, and those groups could say, well, 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 we'll give it to the ballet then. But the ballet would pay our full fee during the year to the school, and then possibly in the middle of June, at the end of that year, if the other- in the middle of June, at the end of that year, uh, if the other groups wanted to reimburse the, the ballet, then the school could then take some of the money we've already paid them from the ballet and give it back to us, which is the credit that these other three groups didn't use fully. So for bookkeeping purposes, it would be much easier than, because then if these other groups thought they were only gonna use, you know, twenty-five hundred dollars of that fee during the year, and then wanted to come up, well, we want to do it in another performance. So then they spend the nine hundred dollars or a thousand dollars and use their full thirty-five hundred dollars, it wouldn't be a, a, a bookkeeping challenge during the year. Just wait till the end of the year, if they got the credit left, and they decide to give it to the ballet, they could do that.
Okay, any questions?
I, I don't disagree with that. The only issue is, um, I mean, each of you contact the business office hall during the year. Many of you are anxiously waiting for this, this day, so that you can finalize and book your, your people to come in throughout the year and schedule your events. If we wait until June, um, ideally, that would be nice, but if there isn't, if there is no remaining credit, then where does that money come from? Because you already scheduled your events.
The ballet would have to pay their fee during the year, and if we didn't get a credit at the end of the year, that's, ballet has to deal with that.
I think he's, okay. So you're saying you want to be reem-, maybe reimbursed for what you paid out?
Yeah, we'd be, we'd pay the school when we do our performances, and our, our cost is more than thirty-five hundred dollars, so we would pay the school whatever we would be, get charged. And then at the end of the year, if some groups had, uh, used less than their thirty-five hundred dollars, then the school would send, and they say, well, why don't we go and give our credit to the ballet, then the school would have to write a check back to the ballet for a thousand dollars, whatever that amount is gonna be, uh, so we could get part of our money back, based on the credits from the other groups that they didn't use the full amount of. So it, it wouldn't matter, it wouldn't be, you know, calculation until the end of the year.
Couldn't each group just write ballet a check out of there?
Can you please, can you please come to the podium so we can record it? Thank you.
The issue is, the school's not giving you thirty-five hundred dollars out of their pocket to you, and then you pay it back to them, it's, they're giving you a credit, so if you don't, if you don't get charged, if you only get, if you're a group and you only spend twenty-five hundred dollars to the school, that's all you're paying to them. So the school would just be taking that credit then at the end of the year and, uh, paying money back to the ballet if the ballet exceeded their thirty-five hundred dollars during the year. If that could be worked out amongst the groups.
And just thinking about it from a booking, keeping perspective, I don't think we should put our business department in the position of writing out checks from the school district to groups. I think that that type of transaction needs to happen within the groups themselves, not putting it on our school and, you know, in our paperwork. Does that make sense?
No.
No?
Well, I, I have a, maybe another way around this that makes it easier. So we're, we're talking about X amount of credits, right? And now we're saying with these groups, you give it this, you give it there. Can we just give, you know, uh, there's seven groups, right? Seven groups? Did I count that right?
You did.
Then we're giving you thirty-five hundred credit, why don't we give seven times thirty-five hundred, twenty-four fifty, as a pot for all the groups?
I, I don't know. I think that might create hard feelings for how the groups divide that out. I, am I wrong? I mean, what, is that a good solution?
I think that's a great solution.
Well, well, that, that's the thing to kind of look at it. As long as we're, so here's the question, Mike, is what is the total? What is the total that was used for everybody?
If we leave it up to four thousand, that does make the math a little simpler, right?
Yeah, I mean, whatever, it would like twenty-eight thousand.
Yes, but then, um...
For the groups.
Yes, and then PACE and Special Olympics, I haven't heard from them. Is anyone representing either of those groups out there? Okay, so if we were to make a decision like that, I don't think we can make it here today, because those groups would be, um, involved in a, in a policy that they didn't have a say in.
Well, were they, were they invited?
They would be more than covered.
With either of the amounts you gave. Um, and the total amount for everyone, it's about twenty-two thousand, two hundred dollars.
And that's assuming everybody has their five oh one season, right?
Correct. Yeah, I went with that amount.
And I'm saying that because you need to get your five oh one Cs. I know not every group does, so we have to have that on record. So I, I propose, and before we make a motion, that we do four thousand dollars in the pot for every group who puts, of these groups who puts in their five oh one Cs.
Would any of the groups here have a difficulty providing a five oh one three C in that paperwork?
Not too hard, it's already good.
I, yeah, I believe some of you already have it on file, but, okay.
And so...
I do, I mean, that does, that definitely simplifies it.
Are you comfortable with that number, Mike?
I, I'm comfortable with it as long as, again, you mentioned the fiftieth anniversary, so...
Right, I'm, I'm, you have to maybe...
We're overdoing it by six thousand from last year, so I think we're giving it some safe room if we do that.
Well, I understand that. All I'm saying is that each group should be entitled to use the four thousand, and anything extra, that's great, but you need to be at least, because you're gonna cause a lot of disruption here if I go over four thousand. I don't have a problem, our group doesn't have a problem with it, because we, we're doing very well. But at least we are entitled to the four thousand. If there's extra, ballet can have it, that's great. I don't have a problem with that, so.
And no one else, no one else in the room has any, I mean, this is your chance to say if you have any qualms about this. It's a simple yet elegant solution.
I think we're ready to call it.
It's, ma'am, ma'am. Okay, so what is the motion that we're...
The group's not gonna get that. But we need to make sure that these...
I know. Oh, thanks.
Because I don't think they're doing anything, I think they're actually doing...
And I think with this, we can revisit to see if there are any issues, and it would also give us a chance, if there are any issues later in the year, you know, with the solution, since it's the first year, to maybe, uh, you know, have a chance to massage it a little bit, if we need to, towards the end of the year, if, if things are, you know, we can bring it back before the board. If this is a solution that isn't working, we can look at, had it for this year.
My only other question would be, would it create a hardship for anyone if we put off our decision until, our next general meeting is, um, next Tuesday night? Would it create a hardship for anyone on our director's side or on our group's side if we made that decision that night instead? That would give you, um, about a week to think about it, it talks amongst your groups, and make sure that you really don't have any issues that need to be revisited.
Just to clarify, I'm getting all the small groups confused.
So we're, you're looking at a possibility of a four thousand dollar credit per five oh one through C groups, correct?
All of the seven groups.
And that, and that runs in a fiscal year from...
Yes.
From July to June.
And then we would revisit that.
Then you revisit, so every year, it could, it could go either way, and that's okay. But right now, that's the number you guys are talking about, and you'll make that decision next Tuesday.
If the other, I mean, I'm okay with making the decision today, but I also could make it next week if...
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and if we're not at the meeting, will that word go out to the groups through an email or something? So we can, we can do it that way?
Yes, we can provide that. If it's made tonight, great. If it's made next week, we can do that as well.
Okay.
Let's call it tonight.
All right.
But I do, I do, do want to make sure that this is not putting any sort of extra burden on people if we put it off a few days.
What are you waiting for?
Yeah, that's, that is, is...
Well, we don't have to, it's just, I, I worry that somebody isn't here tonight and might have wanted to say something, but...
She said that they're covered.
Let's call it.
They are definitely covered.
Okay.
They are.
Okay.
All right, so how do we craft this motion?
You're going back to four thousand dollars.
So...
First off, we're all good with the four thousand number, so are we going to, in our language, are we gonna say it's, that we're creating a fund of twenty-eight thousand dollars and then naming the, the seven specific groups?
Well, I think we need to say, uh, for the seven specific groups who turn in four thousand in the pot, for the ones who turn in their five oh one Cs. I think that's very important that we have our paperwork in.
Okay.
Let's go ahead.
Eric, go ahead.
All right, so I make a motion to, uh, make a pot of, of funds of uncompensated facility use of districted, district facilities excluding fees for utilities, custodian, and all the principal services that are provided for the district for these groups. Do I have to run through them? I will run through them. Lake Havasu Community Choir, or Community Concert Association, Lake Havasu Community Choir, Lake Havasu Regional Orchestra, Lake Havasu Symphonic Winds, Lake Havasu Ballet, Pace, Special Olympics, that is, uh, can put four thousand dollars into the pot for each group that gets their, that, that submits their five oh one C, and that, that pot can be used by any of the groups who do that.
Up to the four thousand. Okay? Up to four thousand in each group?
Each group has the, has the right to use their full four thousand.
Yeah, each group.
If there's some leftover, if you go to a different group, you'll get a Christmas card.
In addition, well, in addition, uncompensated facility use will be granted for those feeder sports programs that exclusively serve LHUSD students, to include fever volleyball, fearless wrestling, and Havasu Heat Wave Wrestling.
I'll second that.
Was that stated well? Enough to work with?
Sharon Huddy? Ms. Ramon?
Yes.
Erica Ron?
Yes.
Yes.
Do, do we need to make a motion to approve the amendment regarding the utility rates and the custodian fees? The asterisk on the paper?
I was just gonna state what you just stated.
Okay, very good. All right. All right, moving on. Three point two, Student Services, School Psychologist and Occupational Therapy, Iluma.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. Hopefully this one is a little quicker. Um, Lake Havasu Unified is obligated to ensure proper evaluation and services for special education for eligible students to receive a free and appropriate public education as required under IDEA. Lake Havasu Unified continues to actively recruit to fill school psychologist positions and occupational therapy positions within the district. We have been unsuccessful to date at filling these openings with qualified district employees and utilize a variety of partners to meet the needs of our students. Iluma is a nationally recognized vendor in an approved part of the SAVE contract. This contract allows Lake Havasu Unified to work with school psychologists and clinicians in order to meet the district's obligation under IDEA. Funds from MNO budget will be used to pay for services, and this contract has been reviewed by Business Services.
I move that we approve, uh, three point two as presented.
I second. Um, how many school psychologist positions are currently unfilled?
We currently have two unfilled positions.
And this will be, these services will be provided remotely? Yes?
Correct, so a remote psychologist will be paired with an onsite staff member.
Okay.
Sharon Huddy?
Yes.
Ms. Ramon?
Yes.
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 All right. Three point three, Business Services, Expenditure Budget for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Madam President, Board Members. As per ARS fifteen dash nine oh five, the district must adopt the two thousand twenty-three twenty-four budget and file the adopted budget with the Superintendent of Public Instruction no later than July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. The district's general budget limit cannot be exceeded unless additional funding is made available through the budget revision process. Presentation of the budget occurred during the proposed budget special session and reviewing during the public hearing. The full proposed and adopted budgets are posted on the Arizona Department of Education's website, the district's website, and are made available for public view in the district business office upon request.
I move that we approve three point three as presented.
I'll second.
Sharon Huddy?
Yes.
Ms. Ramon?
Yes.
Erica Ron?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Does anybody have an announcement? All right.
I actually did, um, I've received a few questions just this afternoon, otherwise I would have asked them earlier, but, um, just about the rollout of the, um, the tech, the laptops that the students will have at the high school. And so I was hoping, I guess this isn't an announcement, but I'm hoping that, um, for the general meeting, there might be some information that we can present to the public. So, it's forever requested an announcement, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, I need a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
All right.
Second. Gotta do the roll call.
Sharon Huddy?
Yes.
Ms. Ramon?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I declare this meeting is over.